That sounded familiar. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting of June 5th, 2018. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Mouts.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is a presentation of the Adopt the Road program by your own Park Services Manager, Mr. Davis.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you. We're here tonight to recognize fifteen groups or organizations and individuals who, two years ago, signed up for the Adopt the Road program. They've been doing it once a month for, they're doing about three blocks is what they're responsible for. The equipment, we provide for them and everything, so they don't have to do that. And we've covered about thirteen miles of sidewalk and picked up a few thousand pounds of trash. So, again, we provide the safety vest and the trash bags and things, so there's no cost to them. And then anybody is welcome to participate, family, work organizations, groups. And then these are the fifteen organizations and individuals who have been part of the program since it began. Scott Christian, our special district supervisor, is responsible for working with these groups, and they're in the order that they signed up in. So, first got J.D. Hume in. All fifteen said they're going to be here, so, okay. They do the North Broadway area. Boys and Girls Club represented. Come on up. And they're actually doing three sites, William Street, Oakley, and Railroad. So, they're really taking on the, so, no, thank you. Thank you. Andrew Miskawi family. Andrew didn't make it. They do Jim May Lake and things. We get a lot of stuff that washes down in there. Premier Autobody, the Paws family. There we go. All right, thank you. State Farm, Donna Rudolph. Randolph, I'm sorry, Randolph.
Social media.
And then we've got a few city departments in those, we've got the co-compliance has adopted Main Street 101. They want to make sure you guys get to plug over there. So, City Utilities Department. They got Main Street to the landfill is the area they had. And then we've got City Hall employees who take Store Road. I don't know if, well, Mark will accept that. Santa Maria Noontime Lions. Thank you so much. Minerva Club. Association of Professionals and Students. They have Pine to Main Street.
You guys can't go away.
Okay, we've got Glacius Lutz del Mundo Church. They've got the Cook and Depot area. They're all calling double duty.
Thank you, guys.
Buena Vista Beautifiers. Thank you. And they do the area around Buena Vista Park. And then we have the Democratic Club of Santa Maria, Broadway, and Main Street. And then the Lions family, Dottie Lyons. All right, that concludes our presentation. And thank you again for everybody for making Santa Maria look beautiful. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much to everyone who's volunteered their time. And I know it's a tough job, and especially if the wind doesn't cooperate and blows everything all over, but thank you so much. I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the recent Go Rodeo Days, window decorating contests, and the teachers, students, and businesses who participated. And I'd like to have Bob O'Raugh representing Elk Recreation to give a brief presentation on the contest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to introduce, I know tonight, the committee, I happen to be the chairman of, but Alice was on it, and Patty Rodriguez, our city clerk, and can't see, the others that were involved, actually, Molly Sheaf, who I thought was going to be here to run the clicker show, the slideshow, Deborah Hood from County Offices, County School Education, Leanne Del Rio from Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, and Geraldine Starwitz, who did some phenomenal stuff for us. And then Alicia Carlson from Rigetti High, art teacher. This happens to be Woody's Butcher Block. Yeah, okay. That's Morrison Garitano Insurance. That's, wait a minute, let me look down my list. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, Santa Maria Valley Historical Society. That there is Trends, and the gal on the right happened to be third place in the competition. She designed that, and the rest of the group from Rigetti was there to help her finish it out, but that was her design, and congratulations, yeah. That there is a historical society, also one of their windows. That there is, I believe, Wells Fargo on Main Street. That's the design that the kids came up with, and that was the theme that everyone kind of picked up to, diamonds and denim, right there. And that's a mystery to me. I don't recall exactly where that is. Anyway, drive around town, look for it. And that's O'Sullivan's Pub. They just finished having a drink and then came out, no. That there, there's Central West Produce, right there. That there is the Host, no, I'm sorry, that's also the Salon, Trends Salon. That there is Rizzoli's Automotive on Blosser, Santa Maria Way, or whatever it's called now. And that's Los, or Los Three, Michuacan, and that's Two Sisters, it's actually Three in the Family, and they did that. And they, we provided winners with ice cream from that place. It's a great little place, it's 103 East Main. That there is Rancho Bowl. And that's Wells Fargo. This was number one winner in the competition. They had seventeen windows, and the kids from St. Joe, fourteen of them, did that in about three hours. It was amazing. That there is, okay, oh, that's our main sponsor for the rodeo, Chrysler, Santa Maria Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, Ram, Fiat, Toyotas, whatever. Anyway, that right there is Rizzoli's. Those are two guys from Santa Maria High did that. That there is, as you can tell, Wells Fargo on North or South Broadway. That, again, is Rancho Bowl. They did, as you can see, several windows. That there is Rizzoli's on their front side of their building. That there is Del Taco, and that's the manager, and I think the assistant manager, and you'll see another picture of the artist. And that there is Rancho Bowl. And that's Rizzoli's on the front side of their facility. They had several windows. That there is, as you can see, Rancho Bowl with the gal reclining there on the left side, that's the only way I can tell. And that's Del Taco. And that's Rancho Bowl with the gal reclining there on the left-hand side. That there are the two boys that did that on Rizzoli's on the Blosser Way, Blosser Side. And there's Wells Fargo on South Broadway. Wells Fargo on Main Street. Wells Fargo, I believe, on South Broadway. And that is the Elk's Recreation Office, right behind Dino's at College and Main Street, and that, they happen to have a planner in the middle. These two gals from Rigetti were very creative in doing that. Actually, Alice Patino helped them. Right, Alice? She's not nodding, but I know she did. And that one is a, that's A Street Cafe at VTC. And there's the gal painting at Del Taco. She got a lot of coverage. And there she is again. And that's our proud sponsor, Chrysler, Dodge, Ram, Fiat. And that's a mystery to me. And that's A Street Cafe, VTC. And that, again, is possibly the finale with Recreation. You can see how innovative they were with the planner in the middle. If you get down College and they're behind delis at Martin Testa's Old Bistro, that's there, and that's pretty darn nice. I have to say, thank you to the city, because the city, some of these windows may exceed the ordinances that we have, but we got permits for all these businesses to have their painting. And there's Dodge Dealership again. And that happens to be the inside, looking out at the gal from St. Joe that was doing Wells Fargo. And there's Wells Fargo right there, the outside, and it's the outside on the left side and the manager. And that was Rizzoli's. Pardon? They were number one. And that was number two, I'm sorry, number two was right there, and this was two gals from Rigetti that did that, and then that's the single gal at Trends did there. I just have to say that we were totally blown away when we had meetings with the art. Alice and I kind of came up with the idea, because we had the business decorating action going on last year, and it used to be everyone had bales of hay and cowboy hats and barbed wire in their businesses, years passed. And then the high school students would go around and paint windows. And so, we reinstituted that this year, thinking it would be kind of nice. And when we met with the folks from the art classes from Santa Maria, they told us, yes, we'd love to do it. And so, said, okay, how many students do you think you can get? And they said, well, I don't know, how many do you think you're going to get? And I said, forty or fifty? And they said, we can get you a hundred and twenty. We had a hundred and forty-four students participated. And what's, what's, what's really amazing, I have to recognize both Alice's Noontime Rotary and the club that I used to belong to, Breakfast Rotary, Mike's in Breakfast Rotary, and the Noontime Kiwanis all popped up to cover the cost. And also Dunn Edwards helped with the paint, but this was a little more than Bob had anticipated when we started. When you're talking about feeding a hundred and twenty people two different days, and the logistics of that, and the students getting the kids out of school, and finding people that could drive them, just a little anecdote, we had to fill out forms, get on DMV's thing to be able to drive. You just don't drive and pick up kids and go around nowadays. And so, they want a blood test and urine test and all the other things. Anyway, I flunked the test. No, it was on the computer, and that's the only reason why. But some people took that, and we had a lot of volunteers driving kids around, because once they were dropped off by the buses, they were here. And then we had them all the way from Rizzoli's to O'Sullivan's Pub, Rancho Bowl, and it was kind of like, we thought they would be just downtown here, and walking distance, which they were, to the library and places like that, and just across the street, and Michuacan Ice Cream Parlor, just, you know, a stone's throw from here. But then it was kind of fun. The kids, as I understand it, loved it. The only thing is, they had tests that week, so we had to hold it on two different days. They painted on Monday, and then on Thursday, some of them went back, as you saw, they didn't finish all that product in a three, four-hour timeframe. So, it was pretty spectacular. Thank you, Phil and the city, for helping us get the permits, and everybody that participated. And let's hope it expands next year and we go from there. So, thank you, Princess, for all you did.
Thank you, Mr. O'Raugh, and thank you, Patty, for all the work, and especially all of our art teachers from the local high schools, and the businesses that allowed these kids to display their artwork was really, was really great. Yeah, we thought it was going to be a real simple endeavor, and it, there's just a lot, there's just a lot of red tape to anything you do, I guess, but anyway, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for public comment?
This time is reserved to be self comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening? Three, thank you. Laura Henderson, followed by Elvia Delgado, followed by Cheryl Assan.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Patino, my name is Laura Henderson, and I serve on the Recreation and Parks Commission, and was appointed to the special committee to further refine the Arts Master Plan. I'd like to first thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the committee. It was an interesting, sometimes arduous, but always productive process. Our final meeting was last Thursday, and we reached a consensus for a draft ordinance, which I am proud of, and which is now posted on the city's website. I'm here to tell you that each of the appointed members on the committee participated fully, brought forward relevant and thoughtful information, ideas, and research, and worked cooperatively to create an ordinance that represents the efforts of all members and addresses the concerns brought up by council members. Our work wrapped up in May after several meetings and many, many hours of work, and is now ready for you, our elected officials, to carefully consider. I see no reason to postpone putting this on the agenda. It is ready now, and I hope we don't have a six-month delay and wait until November. I look forward to returning with fellow committee members to address any lingering questions that you may have at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elvia Delgado, followed by Cheryl Assan.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alvia Delgado. I'm a citizen of the community. Good evening, Mayor Patino, city council members, and the community, the public. Good evening. I'm here today because of my concern about H-2A coming into residents here in town, but not only in town, but the surrounding areas. I'm real concerned about property values decreasing. My father came to the United States back in the 1950s through the Work Program. And when he came here in the United States, he lived on a property that the field workers provided to him. He lived in a, in a small room. Once again, the field workers or the owners were the ones that provided my father a place to reside. I really don't understand why our government, our federal government, is allowing H-2A people, I have no problem with them coming in and working, but what I don't understand is why is our city officials, our federal government, why is everybody allowing them to come into neighborhoods? I'm very concerned about, once again, the property values. I also understand that these programs, the H-2A, are also interested in coming into brand-new developments and asking whether or not they could get a deal if they were to purchase twenty homes, brand-new homes. Why isn't these farm workers, these owners of these fields, why are they not getting the land to provide these field workers with a place to stay? I'm very, very concerned. I'm upset how our city could allow overcrowding in small homes for up to ten to fifteen people living in these houses. Please, if you would please help us in resolving this matter, we would really greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Cheryl Assan.
Hello again. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cordero for calling me three times that first week and trying to get the rules. I guess you couldn't get them, because I haven't heard anything. It's not as easy as you thought it was. That's why I wanted the ordinance to stay until we could figure out what was, what was the rules and what wasn't the rules. Because it's not as easy as your friend says, or this guy says, or they say. I want to see things in writing. That's how we know what's going on. Mrs. Cader, oh, no, Mrs. Cader. See, I see, I saw your wife the other day, that's why I have her in my head. Mrs. Patino, thank you for calling me back. I called you back, and I guess we're playing phone tag still. I have pictures of where, on the 26th of this month of May, we went, we came home around, I came home around 2:30 in the afternoon, and the bus was in their driveway, and it sticks out past a parked car. Now, if we had kids, this is a Saturday. If we had kids playing, they have to go around that bus. And I know it was still there a little bit before five when I went to church. And we didn't get home till late, so I have no idea what time it left. But I know it was there two hours. Now, if one of our kids were out there playing and they got hit, who would be responsible? We don't even know who owns that house still. We have no idea who's taking care of it, nothing. You know, I've come and asked, I've tried to work with you guys, everything. You guys were supposed to get meetings going? I haven't heard anything on meetings? Nothing. Yes, you've called me, and thank you, like I said before, but then that was it. I've never heard it from anybody again. I don't know what else to do. Maybe I'll have to go higher. Maybe, I know this sounds funny, maybe I have to go on TV and start really, and letting them see, and start telling people how our city council takes us citizens for granted, that it's okay. I feel like the citizens who vote and do everything else are less important than the ones that don't, or the ones that have money. We didn't, you know, I really, truly feel that way. Because of our area, we don't have the money, so it's okay. It's not. We're the backbone to this city. And you guys, I feel like we're not being heard, and we're not being listened to. It's really disappointing. It truly, truly is. I'm very disappointed in our city council. And especially for letting this ordinance go down till you guys knew exactly what the rules were. Six people is fine, and they have ten people in there now. You know, it's just not, it's, you don't feel comfortable. I'm sorry, I used to live in my house, when I lived before this, I could leave my door open, I wouldn't feel, I'd feel fine. I lock my doors now. And I know it's not right, but that's just how I feel, because I don't know them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Senko, yeah, Mr. Stillwell, did you want to respond on the dates, or have Mr. Senko respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have the meetings, the public meetings scheduled for the community to provide input and for us to hear the concerns and different points of view about H-2A, H-2A, excuse me. The upcoming, the next public meeting is June 14th at the Atkinson Center at 5:30. And we'll continue to advertise that as we get into the media cycle, get the word out, to have people be able to attend that. And then, that's part of the council's concerted effort to be able to address, receive community input, hear from the community, and then bring it back for the council's direction.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Stillwell.
We do have one other item we typically do this time of year, where within a month of the Fourth of July, and we can just buy just a short update of the efforts underway to prepare for the Fourth of July festivities and fireworks.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Council, as City Manager Stillwell said, we wanted to let you and the community know that in advance of the Fourth of July weekend, the city is again, basically, we're resuming our educational messaging about fireworks. We're going to talk about the use of safe and sane fireworks, the dangers of the illegal fireworks, and also presenting the community with resources. Our action plan is consisting of multiple public service announcements, posters, flyers, website and social media messaging, a fireworks hotline. Free yard signs are available. Those were pretty popular for the last couple of years. And those are, above all, we're trying to remind people that the only time you can use safe and sane fireworks in the city is a twelve-hour span from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the Fourth of July. Anyone caught using fireworks on any other day is subject to a $1,000 fine. We are making the yard signs available out of the city manager's office starting tomorrow. They are in English and Spanish. They're free for those of you who live in the city. If you live outside the city, you're available, you basically check the online, they're available for purchase. We've made a concerted effort over the years in response to the community coming to these meetings, so we're proactive each year in getting the educational campaign out. This month, at every single movie theater in Santa Maria, both of them, at the start of every movie, we have PSA that's running. We also have them on our Comcast 23 channel, which you're watching tonight's meeting. And we're working with our partners at the County Public Health Department with the Animal Services. They're making pet crates available for those pet owners who have cats and dogs who can panic when fireworks explosions are set off. And they've, they'll be, they'll be available through, through late June into early July. We also have, I won't go through everything, but we have, we have posters that we're putting up. You'll see these different on our buses and in buildings. We also have these bilingual flyers that are going into every bag of fireworks that are sold by the local stands. And then, just to wrap up, this is what it looks like for the signs that are available for City Hall. They come with a, this beautiful little wire hanger to pop down in your yard, and you can use them year after year.
And they're on Spanish, they're, they're in Spanish on the back?
And they're in Spanish as well, yes. So, they are English and Spanish. If you have any questions, definitely glad to take those, but we just wanted to inform you and the community that we're, again, coming forward with this action plan. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Mark. And, okay, I will, I will repeat again that it's June 14th, 5:30 at Atkinson Park. Atkinson Park, community room, okay. Okay, we'll start the first of the H-2A meetings and information. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members.
Let's see, thank you. Before we continue, I understand we're postponing item 31 in order to gather more public comment prior to the adoption of the CDBG. order to gather more public comment prior to the adoption of the CDBG allocations. And, Mr. Ng, were you going to elaborate on that now?
I'll turn the time over to Rosie Norris.
Okay.
Community Programs Manager.
Good evening.
We are postponing the approval of the final action plan, so that we can allow for additional written public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
No, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, with that, I would move for the approval of the consent calendar, with the exception of item 3i.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent iter, item, consent calendar, and a second. Having heard the motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino? Aye. The next item of business is appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and give the staff report?
The city council will consider making one appointment to the Landmark Committee. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the Landmark Committee currently has two vacancies. Staff recently received one application from Jerry Seamus to fill a term expiring in June 2019, or January 2019. The appointment is to be made by Mayor Patino with ratification by the city council.
This is much easier when you only have applicants, than when you have, when you have all these applicants that are so qualified. So, I will make a motion to appoint Jerry Seamus to the Landmark Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, any council discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waterfield?
I don't see Mr. Seamus here this evening, so, thank you, Mr. Seamus, if you're home watch, if you're home watching. Next item will be the, no, report, well, council report. Mr. Sewell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The next meeting of the city council is June 19th. There's a number of items on the agenda. We have a retirement resolution from Mike Spears from Information Technology. I'll bring forward an update to the city's investment policy, plan to receive a donation from the Santa Maria Police Council, and the main item on the agenda will be adoption of the 2018-2020 budget. We had scheduled to have an appeal of traffic fees, and that's gonna be at a later meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So, now we will go to oral reports of council members, and I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Boyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only reportable item that I have, I did represent the city council at the Investment Oversight Committee. We, the main topic of discussion was the fact that short-term interest rates are tending to rise a little bit, which should be beneficial for our investment portfolio, while it may not be as beneficial for the rest of the economy. But as of now, we are looking at perhaps having some increased investment income coming over the next couple of years. Thanks.
That's good news. Yes. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, May the 16th, I attended the Villa del Sol ribbon cutting. Also attended the Police Officers Memorial Services. That is always done every year, and it's excellent. I had an SB CAG briefing. May 17th, I had the SB CAG Monthly Board Meeting, along with the APCD Board Meeting that same day. I've been doing a lot of Santa Maria Police Council events, prepare, preparation for the upcoming event, so I attended a lot of different organizations, like Noontime Rotary and other organizations to, to talk about the June event coming up for the Santa Maria Police Council. And on Tuesday, May 29th, I was at Cal Poly, attending the tour of Cal Poly Strawberry Department, which is absolutely amazing. We were taking on a, what was supposed to be a brief tour, but it ended up two and a half hours, and we were taken out into the fields where they had 90 varieties of strawberries that we got to pick and taste, and I can't even begin to tell you which were the best, because they, they were all good. But each strawberry had a different taste to it, and a different look, and it was just amazing to see what they're doing for the strawberry industry in, in the entire country. And on, I did a KSMA for the Police Council advertising on, for the June 11th. Did the parade, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Well, my highlight was Saturday, June 2nd, when I got to ride in the parade. I got to sit on the back of a Camaro convertible, with everybody else in here, except you, riding in the car in front of us. Did get a bit of a backache, because my back wasn't well-supported over the hour and a half trek. And got a little bit interesting, as we were driven back to the start afterwards, with the car going at a regular speed, and we were sitting in the back, so.
People thought we were driving, but we're just holding on.
Getting back to serious things, we, I did participate in the Santa Maria Public Art Committee meeting on June 31st, Thursday, which I trust is gonna be our final meeting. And at that meeting, by vote of the group, we came up with an ordinance, which will be presented to the city council, whenever Mr. Sewell wants to present it to us. But I just thought I'd give you a little heads up on it. The, it was the majority opinion that all municipal, and commercial, and residential properties, which have a value exceeding $50,000, will have a fee, an arts tax fee of 0.25%, with, as I mentioned, a floor of $50,000, and a cap of $2 million. So, the most any developer would have to pay, I think, is $5,000. And, so, well, there was, there were, there was a minority point of view that residential should be excluded from it, and the tax would then apply only to commercial and municipal. But that was a minority view. I personally abstained, and I'm looking forward to it being presented.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. On the May 16th, I also attended the ribbon cutting for Villa del Sol, and it's a, a very nice project, another good job done by the Tobes Group, and the Police Memorial and barbecue that afternoon. On the 25th, I had the sad occurrence of attending the funeral for past City Councilman Tom Robansky, and he went on to be a county supervisor. June 2nd, I rode in the parade with these fine people up here. And yesterday, on the 4th, I did some mock interviews at the Pioneer Valley High School, and it's, it's surprising the view you get from these young high school kids on what, what they, what they wanna do, what they expect to do, and I'm always a little impressed by, by the, the answers that some of them give, and it was, this, this one yesterday was no different for me. It was very, very pleasing to see, see what's coming up behind us, and to see some of tomorrow's leaders in the high school district. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. On May 16th, I also attended the Villa del Sol ribbon cutting, which is another fantastic apartments that Michael Tobes has built in Santa Maria. And that afternoon was the Police Officers Memorial Program over at the police station. On the 22nd, I attended the SATAC commencement ceremony that after, that evening, I guess, the California Strawberry Scholarship Dinner at the Radisson. It is amazing how much money the Strawberry Commission gives out every year, and the, the students can come back and reapply for scholarships. On May 23rd, I attended the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association Annual Economic Summit. That evening, I attended seniors' honors night at Santa Maria High, and again, so many of the seniors that were honored. And I think that the principal said that, that there were more students going to four-year schools in the percentage than any other high school in, in the valley. May 24th, I, no, I didn't do that. May 25th, I attended Tom Robansky's memorial mass at St., at St. Mary's. And I presented an award at the West Coast Customs Cruising National Dinner and Car Show at the Santa Maria Inn. And after that, I was, I went, I wanted to see how the Downtown Fridays were doing, so I was cruising down there. The whole town was so busy. And if you've never had the opportunity, watch one of the cruises, it's, it's really fun. And I went across to the Ethel Pope Auditorium and watched from the front of the Ethel Pope Auditorium, because you have a real good vantage point. But there's an organization that, a car club organization here in town that was doing a barbecue, and I wanted to say hi to them, because all the proceeds goes to the mayor's task for, youth task force. On May 28th, I, oh, I did the year-end banquet for California High School Rodeo Association District banquet at the Madonna Inn, and that includes Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties, where the All Around Cowgirl was Sadie Noblet, who attends San Ones High School, and All Around Cowboy was Tanner Patino, who attends Rigetti High School. So, on May 29th, I, along with Ms. Waterfield, did a tour of the Cal Poly Strawberry Research Center. It was really interesting, because some of the students were showing us on a computer where they can take this, it looks like the size of a pencil, and look at the strawberries, and they can tell which ones are ripe enough to pick yet. And then they, they showed us a machine that goes, can go along the rows, and actually, like a vacuum, sucks up the, and I can't remember the name of the bud, bug, but can suck up like about 18% of the bugs, so they don't have to use any pesticides on these animals. And just all the different things that are going on with research. The strawberries, we were able to go out in the fields and just pick the strawberries and taste them. And the one that I liked, and I had never heard before, was the lassan, and it was like a cross between a strawberry and a raspberry. Very interesting, all the research they're doing there. May 30th, I attended the Leadership Santa Maria Valley Legacy Project ribbon cutting at the Good Samaritan Shelter. That afternoon, I went to Orca Junior High, did interviews with the junior high students, and they come and they sit there, and we did that too, Mr. Cordero, yesterday at, at Pioneer Valley. May 31st, I attended Manetti Mini Rodeo, and then on the 2nd, rode in the car with, again, I took Sadie Noblet, who's the All Around Cowgirl for District 7 High School, and Tanner Patino, and then I also took my granddaughter, Sophia Patino, who won the state finals breakaway championship, and is now going on to the Nationals. So, yesterday, we did the mock job interviews at Pioneer Valley High School. This morning, we did the Ben Hayes Show, and the final leg ceremony for law enforcement torch run at City Hall. And that's about it. Mr. Cordero?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I need like to mention that last Sunday, I attended the SB CAG dinner, and presented some certificates of recognition, and I was also at the law enforcement run today.
Thank you. I was, in closing, a few words about Mr. Robansky, who sat at the dais here, and then went on to be a supervisor for the 5th District. And he was also, I think he was a math, a math teacher at Santa Maria High, do you remember? I can't, I can't a math.
Yes, but he did teach at Santa Maria.
And he taught at Santa Maria High, and I can't tell you how many years. And then he did counseling at Santa Maria. But Mr. Robansky, even as a teacher, was involved in the community, became a city council member, and, as I said, a supervisor, gave a lot to this community, was born and raised on the East Coast, and came out here to the West Coast with his family, and raised a beautiful family, gave a lot to this community, and was such an advocate for people who didn't have a voice in many things, was very well-loved and respected here.
Has anybody ever seen him without a smile? I mean, he just, he just always had that giant smile.
Always had a smile.
That, 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 that surface.
Yes. Never had a bad word to say about anyone, never. And he was just a wonderful person. Any other comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned.